I'm going to call this meeting to order, and if you could show in the record that all seven commissioners are present. As far as this meeting is concerned, I don't see any correspondence specific for this meeting. This first meeting at three o'clock is a special meeting of the commissioners with two things on the agenda. One is the award recommendations for the wayfinding and sign program, and the second is final summary, bid award for the dock project. So with that in mind, I'll turn it over to Evan Millian, Evan Miller, to speak about the wayfinding signage.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Happy to be here today to present a bid award recommendation to you all for the wayfinding and signage program, which was designed through Merge. So attached to the agenda and also in your packet are several documents that are related to the Merge wayfinding signage bid recommendation. So for your review and hopefully approval later today, there's a bid tabulation that was prepared by Beacon Engineering, who's with us here today, that they had reviewed and put together after the bid opening that took place. I believe it was February 4th. So based upon that bid tabulation, Hilton Displays is the apparent low bidder. We had five bids total. The total base bid amount was $109,085.58. The add alternate one is totaling $107,361.17. Add alternate two is $3,176.32. And then the final add alternate three is $16,648.68 for a total project cost or a total bid of $236,271.75. So I think it was great that we were not only able to get just the base bid, but also all three of the add alternates to come in under budget. If you recall, back in October, you all had authorized an expenditure of up to $278,660 out of the current fiscal year budget, so expiring at the end of March. From the current budget for the signage program, which shows that the project came in under that amount totaling roughly $42,388. I will mention that Merge, following the receive, after we received the bids, Merge did contact Hilton Displays. They did not only a phone interview, but also sent them a questionnaire just to verify that they submitted the bid that included, you know, all the, they understood all the requirements, construction, design elements that are really specific to those contract documents, which they were. And in anticipation of the recommendation to award the project to Hilton, if it's acceptable, we have a notice to award prepared in your packet as well. So at that point, I turn it over to any questions that you might have.
Anybody questions? Please feel free.
Yeah, is there, does Merge and Hilton have any experience working with each other?
So Merge has not directly worked with Hilton before in the past, and it is described in Beacon Engineering's report to you all that I believe, Merge has worked with Mr. William Clark, who has been the Hilton representative throughout the bidding and bid evaluation process, but Merge has not previously worked with Hilton before. So that was one of the reasons why we also had them not only set up a phone call with them to go over their bid, but also to complete the questionnaire.
What is Hilton's experience in terms of doing this type of municipal signage?
From my understanding, they have significant experience. I hadn't taken the time to go through any supplemental documentation that they might have provided that sort of showcases some of the work that they had done. So we kind of had deferred to Merge as the experts on that, and they came back and said that they are confident with this bidder and recommends that we award the bid to Hilton.
Appreciate all your work on this, Evan.
I actually went to the bid opening, and it was really educational because the costs were all over the map.
Right, they were.
They really were. Some of them were, you know, double this. So I'm glad that this company checked out. There was a discussion, a brief discussion that day about the schedule. Can you remind us what the story is there?
I can. So basically, about a week from the notice to proceed, there will be a pre-construction meeting scheduled. Following that pre-construction meeting, that's when really they start the process of doing the shop drawings. That'll take approximately three weeks. They'll provide samples of the signage that will take approximately four weeks. And then also, four weeks out, we'll do a final field markout of where all the signs are going. We've already done this before, but we'll do it again with the bidder. Pole installation, we've asked that the poles be installed prior to May 21st with the expectation that we can get a lot of the concrete work done, poles installed prior to the busy Memorial Day weekend. And then by that point, you know, the poles will be installed, and then it's just putting up the signage.
And that'd be June, right?
What's that?
The signage would be June?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then, and if they can get signage up before then as well, anything that they can get done prior to May 21st is the goal. And then...
The goal was May 21st, you said?
For the poles.
For the poles, yes.
The poles, and then what date in June?
And if they can get signage up before then too, that's the hope.
And what's the, what's the actual date that they have to have all the signage up?
I don't think that we have a substantial completion date yet. I think that's sort of to be determined based upon the pre-construction meeting that we have with them. But for right now, we've just identified the May 21st as being the deadline of sort of having any disturbance in the public right of way or public space completed.
You expect the signs to be up in June?
Yes, or before then.
Or before.
Mm-hmm.
Tight schedule.
Yeah, very, yeah.
Do we know the text, the final text for all the signs yet? Is that known, or is that still a little bit fluid?
Yes, so the content itself is still being finalized. One thing that I'll indicate is that we have, in some of the pedestrian kiosks, we have interpretive panels, which just provides sort of historical information about the city of Rehoboth Beach. We have been working with the Historical Society on putting together brief descriptions with photos, site specifics. So wherever a kiosk is located, we're pulling some historical information about that location, and we're going to include that on the map as well, or on the interpretive panel as well. We had some back and forth with the state parks because they wanted to make sure that Gordon's Pond was conveyed correctly. So that's been worked out. But other than that, the content itself, we have a couple more weeks to finalize, but most of that has been completed at this point.
Evan, a lot of new poles are going to be going up. I mean, you know, the detail that you've provided is very helpful. Does the bid include removing old signage and old poles?
Yep.
So we don't end up with this mishmash?
Correct.
Of old and new.
Yeah, and the whole goal from the project is not just to install new poles as well that might be more visually attractive, but also to remove existing and replace as many signs as we can, sort of consolidate signage. We have also stipulated or conveyed to the contractor that we would like any poles that are removed to be turned over to the city that way in case we need to use them in the future, we have them. So we'll kind of use our discretion to say, yeah, we want to keep that, or no, you can just discard of it.
I had asked this question at some point in the process, and just want to see where it ended up in the final bids, but most of the modern wayfinding signage includes some sort of mobile application and digital displays, RFID, you know, QR codes or some other technology that incorporates, you know, the use of mobile apps, et cetera, where signage have these capabilities or have, you know, be able to add these capabilities easily. So can you talk us through that a little bit?
Sure. I would say certainly QR codes, if we were to go that route, could be added separately. It would just be a process of, you know, putting together that QR code and some sort of sticker and adhesive that could be put on the sign. But for the most part, the content itself has been finalized at this point. And then anything, if we were to do sort of QR codes or something like that, we could certainly add to it in the future.
Is that in the plans? Is that something you're going to, you...
Currently not. It's not in the plans right now, but it could be something that we explore.
Is the additional stock actual signs, they're not blank signs that could be used later, they're actual extras of what's out there already?
They are just essentially aluminum poles. It doesn't have any of the content on it.
It doesn't.
Just because we don't know what we need just yet.
Right, that's what I was going to ask.
Right.
Okay, so they're for future use.
Correct.
And whatever happened with the, with our owning, making sure we own the design? Remember, that came up at a previous meeting?
Yes, and Merge confirmed that we do own the, any design that they had put together.
So then we could, if we wanted more printed for something two years from now, we would not have to go to Merge, we would not have to go to Hilton.
Correct. And they've even given us some design renderings of existing city regulatory signs that we have, but following the colors, font that they've used. So they've kind of gone a step extra in terms of providing us with designs for other signs we might want to consider in the future.
So does that mean that our shop here on a small scale could replicate if a sign gets broken or a car goes through it or...
I don't think so. I think that would be something that we'd have to work with the contractor to figure out if we could have some sort of, you know, understanding as if we do need to purchase additional signs in the future, or have them done, you know, working with them or a different vendor.
A totally different question. You know, you're probably closest to this project of anyone in this room right now. How do you answer the criticism? Some of us have heard some critique from our neighbors about why are we spending any amount of money on signage in this day and age when everyone can go onto their smartphone and find everything? Why?
Well, I mean, working with the parking department this past summer, implementing the new parking technology for the city, I would kind of argue that the information's out there and available on the city website, but not everybody looks at that information, not everybody takes the time to research that information, especially visitors. So the signage is something that I have heard not only from various committees from the city, but also from the public as well, interacting with them on the street, doing parking enforcement. Signage has been a big thing that has come up. And I know it's been mentioned from the committees as well in terms of trying to direct traffic off of Rehoboth Avenue over to the side streets. That's a component of this project. Pedestrian signage too, so it's not just vehicular and parking, but it's also pedestrian signage as well. We have a lot of signs out there. They're not as visible, they're not as attractive. So I think the goal of this program was to try and increase the flow of traffic, increase just the understanding of, you know, different amenities and services that are provided, you know, to pedestrians, vehicles, whatever it might be. And then overall, I think it's a great project because it's going to eventually to be tying into signage that is planned for the Route 1 corridor as well between Lewis and Rehoboth Beach, hoping in the future that that project will see it through. Merge has been working, I think it's been mentioned before, with the city of Lewis, Delaware Tourism to provide a signage program along Route 1 in between Lewis and Rehoboth, and then ultimately with Rehoboth as well. So I think it'll tie in nicely with Route 1 and the other communities as well.
Yeah, you know, Dick, and if I could say, from what Evan said, from Southern Delaware Tourism, what they're trying to do is bring it together so that all the communities are kind of connected in one fashion or another. I think we're just a little bit out front of the other smaller communities. And I think, you know, one of the things too is, over the years, people have been asking, because there's signs everywhere, as you know, in town. And I think sometimes they were just added without any kind of real plan. And what this does, in my mind, is kind of takes everything down and then puts up the things that are recommended. And so, you know, I think combined with the brand-new signs, nice logos, directions, you know, our website is already set up in a very positive fashion if people use it, but I think there's going to be an education process to say, hey, you know, make sure you use the website, hear the signs, and I think in the long run, it'll be very positive for people moving around town, whether residents or visitors.
Oh, I fully agree. And I know, you know, we've had these discussions periodically over the last 18, 24 months, but not everyone has been present for them. And so people are still raising kind of the question about the why? Why are we going this direction? And I think it's worth talking about, and we're going to have to continue to talk about it so people understand why we're doing this.
Well, and I think the other reason, we touched on it, is just the safety aspect. I mean, if people see a big sign that says, "Turn here, no parking here, parking over here," I mean, and see it ahead of time, and it's very visual, you're not stopping and starting and distracted, you know, continuously. So that was a big plus for me for investing in this. The one thing I had also asked in one of the meetings on this when we voted was that we reach out to the Southern Delaware, you know, for the tourism groups as well as the state to see if we could get some additional. I'd already gotten some grants for us previously, which was great from the state. Were we able to get any more grants to offset some of these costs as well?
Not at that point. That's something that I can certainly look into. Right now, what we had just received was the grant funding to do the actual design of the project.
Did we, I don't mean to totally put, but do we have, let me say, ask it this way, do we have the opportunity to go back and get additional funding to offset some of these costs?
I think potentially, I think it might be difficult to show a need for it. At this point, it depends on sort of what grants are out there and what the eligibility is. Because we've already set aside funds in the current fiscal year budget, I mean, and the bid has come in under budget, it might be difficult to demonstrate the need, but certainly something I can look into and contact.
It just didn't seem, since we're on the leading edge of this, that they would want us to do this, do this right, and be able to capitalize across the state from our investment, and therefore, maybe there should be some contribution to our investment. But anyway, thank you.
One of the issues that I had raised early on was about, you know, possibly phasing it in, partly for cost reasons, but also it just seems like there, you know, there's going to be change. Eventually, I hope we will have bike lanes throughout the city, and we won't have, we won't have all the bike signage available now. So, I mean, I guess that just gets added when, as needed. But that was one of the reasons why I had originally thought that we should phase it in, but, I mean, the costs have come in below what we set, so, you know.
Anybody else?
Evan, one thing that I don't see in the bid proposal is, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up the original items from Merge. The parking brochure, which I think was a significant amount, well, I think it was like $15,000 or $20,000, I don't see that included in any of the bids here.
Yeah, so I think the initial amount that we had in there, or Merge was budgeting for, was $10,000 for the parking brochure. So the city currently prints a parking brochure. Our costs are even less than $10,000 to do those brochures. So in talking with Merge, it didn't make sense to have a fabricator of signage put a bid in on a parking brochure. Essentially, Merge will work with us to design the brochure, and then we would just use our vendor to print the brochures. It's already in the budget, and it was less than, you know, what they were projecting for, so we thought that was the best route to go.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is great. I mean, obviously, I think the examples that Merge put together when they were doing the design phase was pretty neat. And I think as we go through the future and more communities are involved and Route 1's involved, I think it'll be a nice, you know, way to set up Southern Delaware from a tourism perspective. And, you know, also, I mean, we're a good $40,000 below what Merge had estimated, so I think that's a very good positive as we move forward.
Yeah, we've talked about this for the past several years, so I'm glad to see it come forward. And if there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to approve.
I don't, I think we have to wait until...
We have to wait until the afternoon meeting.
Oh, this is not a voting meeting?
No.
Okay.
No, this is just the discussion, get all the details out.
Got it.
And then the voting on approving the contract would be this afternoon.
Can the public comment?
Sure, but let me finish with the Commissioners, please. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Stan Mills, 34 Maryland Avenue. I've spoken before, I don't know the entire inventory of what's being done, but I'm generally supportive overall for it. My only wish would have been to perhaps defer anything on Wilmington, Baltimore, until we could realize a consultant and a streetscape for those streets so that hopefully everything marries in. I do have a question for Evan, and that's relative to the signs. And I'm hoping that they're removed in entirety because of the parking meter posts were cut, were cut off above ground level to leave a tripping hazard. So they put cement in the center and cement around, beveled around the edge. It's still lawnmowers can catch and are still tripping hazards. And now, now they are virtually impossible to remove without taking a backhoe, whereas they could have been pulled up. So that's just maybe a cautionary note, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will mention that that was part of the specifications, that the contractor has to remove the, in entirety.
And replace whatever was on it before, whether it's sidewalk or whatever. Yes, please.
Jeff Selman, 506 Jones.
I'll tell you what, you try over here just a minute. Thank you.
Jeff Selman, 506 Jones Lane. The, I have a question regarding the award of the contract. The post-bid questionnaire indicated several things that Hilton answered. One of them was a couple of questions regarding who they were going to hire to do the work. Anybody can make signs, not anybody can install them. So my question is, will the city have any chance to review who they finally tell you they're going to hire as a subcontractor so that you make sure that you have the right people installing these?
Yes. Last that we had spoken to Merge and talked about their conversation with Hilton, they were planning to use some, a Delaware-based company that is local. So once we hear from them in terms of who they're planning to use for subcontractor, we'll know and certainly talk with them and make sure that they're qualified.
Thank you, Evan.
Walter Brittingham, 123 Henlopen Avenue. Thank you, Evan, for a placed presentation. Could we have an explanation maybe now before it comes into the next meeting? What the parameters, where they are? This is going to be done in the city? Is it just downtown? What streets? How far out does it go? And do we have an exact idea what every sign that's being proposed is going to look like? Or are they yet to be designed?
I mean, I think what Evan said was, a lot of them are still under design, and the wording is still under.
So right now, what we do have, and if it's not available on the city website, we can make it available, is several documents. One is a design intent document, which shows every single sign, dimensions, content, all of that. And then we also have a locations document, which shows on, I think it's about four different pages, I know it's been provided to you all before, every single signage group and where it's going to be located based on a Google Map overlay. And then with that, actually, Kevin and I and a couple members of the various committees had gone out and actually took location photos. So there's a whole document listing, I mean, it shows Kevin and I standing there with the number for the, that correlates with the sign that's proposed for that location. So we can make those documents available.
That would be great. I think people might like to see it.
What's the width of the construction zone? Or does it go to the lake and Henlopen Acres?
I think it goes as north as Doville Beach, as south as, I want to say, maybe Wilmington Avenue, but then we also have a gateway signage at Silver Lake Bridge. So that's probably the extent of how far we go, south, and then as far west as the Canal Bridge, because there's signage for Visitor Center, Gordon's Pond State Park, so.
And then to the west from there on State Road as people are coming into...
Yes, correct.
In that little triangle there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's another proposed gateway sign as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Remind you that considerable work has been done at Silver Lake Bridge, lines pushed underneath the red light, so if there's a gateway sign coming in from Silver Lake Bridge, extra caution needs to be made there, power lines for the bridge lights and everything else.
Thank you.
And just on that note, the contractors required to do all utility markouts as well, so.
Right. You know, Bob, we have Bob Palmer here, the engineer that did the bid sheet. Anything you want to add from your perspective, your professional experience?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. No, I have nothing further to add. I think Evan did a fine job. The bidders all followed, well, there were a number of bidders that didn't follow the bid instructions, but none of that changed the bid outcome, so.
How many bidders were there? Five?
Five. Yeah, there were five bids, and I think we gave out 15 or so bid packets.
And none were local, right?
Yeah.
The closest one was New Jersey.
Yeah.
And this company is in South Carolina.
Right, that's right. There was a certain level of expertise and sign qualifications that Merge put together in their design intent document to ensure that the fabricator had the right tools, was using the right materials, so that you don't end up with signs that fade prematurely, that weather, you know, weather unnecessarily.
Yeah, I think having five out of 15 that you sent it to, that's a pretty good percentage.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Evan, I have one question. Because Mr. Brittingham just talked about location, I just pulled up the, if anyone wants to look, it's the October 7th workshop meeting has the locations. And I just noticed the northernmost sign is actually on Dodd's Lane by the Art League. Is that something that we're...
Hmm, I'd have to go back to the documents and take a look. It might just be a directional signage to the Rehoboth Art League, but I would just have to go back through the documents.
I, that one just seems curious to me.
That may be so.
We've always had a sign.
Yeah, there's always been one right by Henlopen on Second or whatever to go in.
We've always had one.
But thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make sure that we put that information on the city website under Current Projects.
Great, Evan, that's great. If there's nothing else, we'll move on, and we'll have the vote this afternoon when we have the other situation. The second item on the discussion is discuss the bid recommendation for construction of the Grove Park Canal Access Project. We have Matt Spong here from Landscape Architecture Services, who controlled the bid site and is the agent for LRCIA on the dock situation.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself at this time.
Okay, hopefully it won't be as long as last time.
That's correct, Mayor. Mr. Spong is here to address the bids that were received and any questions that you might have. Mr. Spong, Landscape Architectural Services, is the representative and did put the bid package together, so he will address you now.
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, public. I'm Matt Spong, Principal of Landscape Architectural Services. We advertised for bids on December 6th and December 19th in the News Journal and also in Cape Gazette, I believe it was the December 11th, as required by state contracting regulations. The bids were due, actually, at that meeting, we had five general contractors and about 10 subcontractors. The bids were received on January 8th. We received three general contract bids. They were from Thompson Contracting, was the low bid at $1,254,306, with several add alternates for a little over $11,000, for a total of $12,286. JJDI was the second bidder, base bid $1,370,000, alternates for about 17, for a total of Mumford Miller was bidder number three of the five general contractors. They were at $1,890,000 for the base bid, $12,000 plus $6,000 for the alternates, for a total of just under $2,000,000, $1,908,000. Our estimate was about $900,000 plus a bid contingency, which is not the same as a construction contingency, and two add alternates for about $1,022,121. As was mentioned, or not mentioned, but it's in this document, the Lewis-Rehoboth Brown Improvement Association is going to cover construction phase services for our firm as well as our two geotechnical engineers for construction, compaction, backfill, and the vibration monitoring to protect the existing water line. So the total bid estimates with contingency and the professional fees would be $1,43356. But since the LRCIA... But since the LRCIA is covering the contract administration engineering that I just described, the base bid would be $1,254,306, and we are recommending a construction contingency of $100,000 for unforeseen conditions. So that would make the total motion of a construction budget of $1,354,306.
Thanks, Matt. Any, Mark, would you like to add anything? Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners and public. I'm with the Lewis Rehoboth Canal Improvement Association. We've been working on this project for about 10 years. And a couple of notes I'd like just so that the public is aware of. We've actually raised over $1 million to put towards the project, so when you see the price tag of that bid, that's not what is being asked of the city. There has been over a million raised. Those funds have come from a variety of sources, and I'll read through a few of those so you can see the support and the avenues of funding coming in. Some of this is coming from local legislators via either the bond bill or CTF funds. So we have $300,000 coming from Del Dot, Representative Schwartzkopf, $200,000 with the bond bill, $20,000 with CTF funds from Representative Schwartzkopf's help, and Senator Lopez, $100,000. We've also had some donorship, or donors that are local businesses and such. We have $150,000 coming in from Crystal Trust Foundation, which is a grant that by working with the city, last June, the city endorsed the project as a public-private partnership, private being the nonprofit, so that grants could be pursued, and we were able to get a $150,000 grant from Crystal Trust. And I just want to make sure that folks are aware that that is out there as far as the funding that is coming in and such. I know there's some spreadsheets that I'm sure could be shared that show exactly where those funds are coming from and such. The other thing I'd like to discuss or mention is that the Canal Improvement Association is looking at this project as, at this time, when we started the project years ago and Matt from LAS came on board to help with construction estimates and things, we were working from an estimate. And like any project, an estimate is, you know, the best guess you can do. So when the estimate was completed, we were pretty much on point, and obviously when something goes to bid, prices can go up. There can be, you know, costs of materials, different things that come up. So the cost on the bid, yes, it was higher, and that's where we're looking to work with the city, for the city to help on that portion that's remaining. And that, the Canal Improvement Group will continue to fundraise. And a couple of the things we'll be doing are fundraising to contribute, continue to contribute to the project as well as maintenance and other things that go forth. A few ideas we've discussed, we're looking at raising funds, setting up an endowment so there's a continual, basically continual funding coming from our organization to that dock project so that it can have some maintenance fees covered on an annual basis and such. And as I mentioned earlier today, speaking with folks at the budget meeting, this is the Canal Improvement Association, so our fundraising isn't stopping because now there's a public access point in Rehoboth Beach, but the canal goes a long way in both directions and we hope to continue to help projects along the way.
Thank you, Mark. And we have Scott Thompson from Southern Delaware, who is also a board member, just wanted to make sure in case you had anything there. And as we spoke before in the, in the budget meeting, as Mark just mentioned, the Lewis Rehoboth Canal Improvement Association has raised through their fundraising activities, talking to the state, Del Dot, Representative Schwartzkopf, Lopez, a number of the different businesses, a total of $1,074,000. And as Matt just mentioned, the, the bid itself is $1,004,000 something. So we're in the area of $280,000 deficit at this point in time. And what we're, what, what we're suggesting and LRCIA is suggesting as well is to get a commitment from the city to move forward on this project. As Matt talked about, the bids were sent out, I believe, in December. They were due January 8th, and one of the stipulations in the bid was to have 60 days for the city to look at the numbers, talk with our consultants and our engineers about it, and then make a decision within that 60 days, and that 60 days is March 8th. And so what we're going to ask at the, the next meeting is for the city's commitment to move forward with this project, with the idea that the city would commit to the $280,000 today, but with the idea that hopefully, and I'm going to ask Matt in a minute about timing, that over the next year or so, as the construction is taking place, that the LRCIA continues to do their fundraising and hopefully this, that number of 280 will diminish pretty substantially. But again, that's something that we hope for over the next year or so. Matt, can you tell me, we signed on the dotted line on March 8th to give them that commitment. What's the timing for construction and so on and so forth? Best-case scenario, I know some of it's been extended a bit.
Right. Well, the, the original intent was they would start, you know, ASAP was what we had in the addendums and we explained at the pre-bid meeting. So that would have hopefully been, you know, like February. Of course, we're a month behind that now. And then in meeting with the staff at the, prior to the pre-bid meeting, it was decided that, that the project would have to be done in a couple of phases, well, not really phases, but, but that work could not occur basically between June 15th and August 15th because of all the summer traffic and, and conflict with tourists and the vacationers. So, so that being said, which I'm going to just add something here, that, that wasn't foreseen in the original construction estimate. So you basically have two mobilization charges, and in this case, they have to have a 70-foot-long hydraulic excavator. So that's required to come on the highway, which is a special permit. So that, that costs thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to do that. And also, at the 11th hour in November, was decided to put a fire suppression system in, which is not normally done on a dock that does not have fuel or has less than 10 slips. And that's national fire code, but, but the local fire company wanted that, and that's, that's fine. But those are two unforeseen things that account for almost $100,000. And just another thing, just show up, we've done our due diligence. This is happening throughout the state in the, in the last three months. There's a project in Wilmington that's been going on for about 10 years. Rodney Square, which is a Del Dot, City Wilmington project, came in 20% above. There's a big drainage project in Sussex County. I was just at a meeting down there for a project for Gordon Seaford. Not our project, came in 30% above. With, with the low unemployment and good economy for 10 years, we're seeing prices now that are equal to like they were in 2006. They're just going through the roof.
And with that in mind, if we were to, to start and then hold off June through August, what kind of timeframe do you see the final, final?
They're estimating about a year.
Okay. So about a year from whenever they start?
Right. If we give them, or the city in this case, gives them the notice to proceed, you know, they can start getting their bonds and all those kinds of things and ordering materials. And, you know, they, they, even though it's getting close to May, when they also have to stop for another week for Memorial Day, they will be able to get some work done. So, you know, it would be advantageous. And plus, the other thing that I think's been discussed with the staff and may not be clear to everybody, work can occur on the canal where it won't be interfering with traffic, because a lot of this work's going to be done from a barge at the bottom of the canal, and there's no restrictions from Denrick or the Army Corps of Engineers as long as they're not in the canal accessway for boating. So, so some of that work can continue at that time.
And, and you've been helpful with the LRCIA, getting grants, whatever. Some of that money is going to run out pretty soon, as far as a timing perspective.
Right. The, about $100,000 from Denrick's, what's called Outdoor Recreation Parks and Trails is, is basically for a year. You know, you can't ask for an extension, but they don't like to do that because they'd rather have you spend it, because they want to give it to somebody else if it's not spent. And then we have a-
But you can, you can ask for an extension? You can?
Can, but, but they prefer that you don't.
When does that one expire?
In, in June.
In June?
But, but, but we could also ask for, for, for another grant to help bring up some of the, the deficit.
Right.
Yeah. And, and that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, additional grant. Every, every year in, in June, there's available, and the amounts vary from year to year because it's based on investments that the ORPT has.
That's, that's given here is $44,000.
Excuse me?
That's given here is $44,000, the outdoor recreation parks and trails.
Well, that, that's, that's the, the match.
Okay.
It's a 50/50. And we're using other grant money like the transportation enhancement funds. That's, one reason to Del Dot wants is because of the fact that this is a good thing to take some traffic off the road. And that was a $300,000 grant.
And so with that in mind, Matt, since we're not going to be done by June, I would assume that you'd probably be applying for another grant?
Yes.
If the possibility is there, in addition to whatever the fun, other fundraising that LRCIA is going to be doing. Mark, you had something?
Just to expound a little bit on that. So for the funding side, the ORPT grant that was mentioned, when that fund came in, that was a direct, that directly occurred because the city and the nonprofit partnered up to go forward. The nonprofit could not go for that on their own. The city could possibly go for that if they had a project that possibly, you know, was in their, in that wheelhouse. So that came from the relationship, and that is also a grant, as Matt mentioned, that could be applied for again. And a lot of times, when a project's in, Denrick sees that and says, oh, we'd like to continue that because this project's got legs and it's moving and, and such. So, and as Matt was talking, the $44,000 that's shown on the balance, just to clarify, so $92,000 came in. Funds had to be utilized for construction documents and, you know, permitting and different things to get to a point where we could say, yes, this is definitely able to happen. And so funds, that was approved with Denrick, I believe, to, you know, to allow those things to, to occur. Some of the funds that would go away, though, the, the bond bill and CTFs and some things, some of these funds will expire in June. That's why it's, it's very timely to look at the project through those eyes where a project that's, you know, a million, 280, and you have a million dollars that is getting handed to the project, that if it goes, the project doesn't move forward, those funds will go away. The $150,000 from the foundation, foundations talk to each other, they're probably not going to go back and get funds from that foundation again, or the other two foundations that have offices in the same facility kind of thing. The same with some of the funds from, the donors have, as far as different business donors in the area have asked, you know, they want to help and contribute, but they want to make sure the project is, is, is going forward. Result of that, in the last week, we had a $100,000 contribution about two weeks ago come in to this project because they were like, wow, this is really occurring. So there's, there's a momentum going that if this project was put on hold and bid at a later date or such, you would almost be resetting the clock, starting back, and then who knows what prices of materials and other costs could be a year from now or something like that. So that's, that's our position as an organization on this, and it really comes down to, there's a lot of energy. There's, we've gotten through the organization, we've had a lot of support, we have some surveys that we've done, folks talking about the project and such, and we really, truly, genuinely feel that we'll see more support for the project because now folks that can contribute perhaps a little bit are more inclined because they can see the, the light at the end of the tunnel. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
I just have a question about the, and I don't know, maybe both of you or either of you could answer the question. So when we're talking about the funds expiring in essence, is it based on obligation date of the funds? So like if the contract is awarded before, or on or before March 8th, and the funds don't expire or have to be returned if they're unused by June, is that to trigger or do the funds actually have to be expended?
The, my understanding is the bid would need to be awarded.
Okay.
So that the funds could be spent. So the $300,000 from Del Dot, we were actually, last year, we were able to acquire that, and through working with them and establishing a good relationship, they were like, these funds you could hold on to a little bit because you're just at the point where, when you have a construction-ready project, shovel-ready, these funds can go to, to it. But after this year, those funds maybe get, you know, shifted somewhere else.
Right. But once they're obligated, then that's a bona fide commitment of those funds to the project. And, and based on comments you made at the budget meeting this morning, it's, it's just human nature that if potential investors see that a project is actually beginning, they can come across the bridge, they can see that the contractors there are actually beginning work, that they may be more inclined to say, okay, the city's behind this, you know, your nonprofit association, LRCIA, has done a great job of, of getting us to this point, and they would be more likely to come on board if they were inclined to do so, based on that activity, and delays like you just mentioned would most likely cause people to, to ask more questions and may be disinclined to invest.
Yes, I would agree with that. The, you know, when folks see, when we, we've had a lot of discussions, a lot of potential donors, contributors in the area, and a lot of them are just waiting for that shovel to go on the ground, essentially.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions?
Well, we had a very extensive discussion this morning, and most people in the room can't benefit from it because they weren't here, almost feel like we should roll the tape or something, so we don't have to, because Steve gave a very nice introduction. Mayor, you gave a, a really, you know, good detailed history of this going back, you know, 20 years. But where, where it comes out, what we have to vote on is, is the budget. And so just as a way of summarizing where we are, which has nothing to do with the quality of the project, I mean, the LRCIA has done a fantastic job of fundraising, they're on a roll, you know, they've gotten $130,000 just in the last couple of weeks, which suggests that it wouldn't take much longer for them to actually raise the money. But the things that troubled me this morning still trouble me, and that is that throughout this entire process, going back to 2011, every vote that has ever been taken on it is with a specific provision that the city will not contribute to the funding of its, of its construction, and that, and yet, it's a very important public-private partnership because the public partnership comes from, later. It comes in maintaining it, you know, for 40 years and in, and, you know, getting it potentially dredged and all the other costs that go in with, with maintaining it once it becomes an asset of the city. So the, you know, million, 1.3 million or whatever that cost to construct it was never supposed to be a city obligation. Where we are in terms of timing is that this morning, well, first of all, 6 o'clock Wednesday night, we received the paperwork that is here in front of us with all of the costs, the funding sources and everything. 6 o'clock Wednesday night. Yet we came into a 10 o'clock budget meeting this morning, we went over the entire capital budget here, which had been revised since the last meeting, capital budget of over $5 million. And it was all done, we were making great progress. And, and then in the last 30 minutes of the meeting, this was sprung on us. And after considerable discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, what, the position we're in is, we're going to have to take something out of our budget for next year in order to fund this $280,000 if we are to award the contract now. Not only, and there's dozens of priorities on this list, and many of them are urgent and essential. In addition to that, we are three years into a five-year capital improvement program. This project has never been anywhere in any of these documents, nowhere, because it wasn't the intention for us to be in the position we're in. So, and, and we had some, some excellent comments from the public this morning to basically say, I mean, a number of possibilities were raised, and they're not ideal by any means. Some of them were, could we phase it in? of them were, could we phase it in? You know, perhaps not. Could we do a smaller project? Could we say, to the, and it might have to go out for a rebid, I get that. But could it be, you know, do we have X dollars to spend, what can we get for X dollars? I mean, that's where we are unless we want to not do the LED lights throughout the city, or not do a stormwater project, or not do some other critical infrastructure. And I'm really struggling with being able to find the funds to make this happen, given that we're really not supposed to be in this position.
I would just like to clarify a couple of things, and thank you for your comments, Commissioner Gay. We recognize that it's not always a perfect world, and especially with construction projects. And I think what Mr. Spong indicated is that what we've experienced with our bid opening process is not atypical at this time and in this area, where the bid prices exceed what very good cost estimates have indicated what the cost should be. Another part of the meeting that we had this morning talked about, you know, what do we do to come up with whatever the, maintaining the balanced budget approach that the city manager has steadfastly done while trying to identify where there may not be, where there's funding for projects that aren't necessarily as critical. And she has agreed to do that. And so she will be reporting back to us at the next budget meeting on March 10th. But we really, because of the fact that the expiration date of the bid that we receive from the low bidder expires on the 8th of March, we don't necessarily have the luxury of that timing. And so I think what we need to consider is showing the commitment that the city has to this very important project, it's been in the works for over 10 years, it's been identified multiple times in the 2010 comprehensive development plan, and the feedback that the LRCIA has received has been mainly positive. And there's already evidence in Lewis that similar-type facilities that they have do generate a lot of interest in kayaking and paddle boating and things of that nature, which are things that I think we would like to attract here. And so I think the intent is that while we may need to obligate the $280,000 so that we can initiate the project, we know that there's ongoing, very rigorous efforts to find a way to reduce what that $280,000 will ultimately be to the city. And, yeah, I'm a glass three-quarters-full type of person, so I'm not the best person to be a naysayer, but I fully believe that we're going to find a lot of that money to offset that 280K expenditure before the funds have to be expended. And what we're talking about is just making the commitment of the funds. Any dollar that comes in to offset that will reduce the actual expenditure that the city will have to make.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffer.
I have one quick question.
If I can say one thing to go on with Commissioner Gase, from a historic perspective, there was never a vote taken to go forward with this project until about a year or two ago.
Last July.
Yeah. Basically, and the information I know, because I used to be part of this board when I was not a commissioner, and back in 2011, I think the board came to the city and asked for their city, basically to say, okay, look, we're going to try to fund this, but we need the city to go on the top of these grants. City said, no thanks. And then I think there was another vote, two or three years later, that the board came back and said, look, you know, we got a lot of interest, the economy's a little bit more positive, so on and so forth. Nope.
That one did go through, if you're thinking of the design one in 2013, four to three.
Design, exactly. But basically, the city always saying, well, you know, we don't know if something's going to happen as we move forward. And then, you know, last year, 18, whatever the months ago it was, the commissioner said, yes, we're very supportive of this project, let's move forward. I don't know that there was a specific portion of the bid that said, or excuse me, of the vote that said, hey, however, the city doesn't want to pay for anything, or the city won't pay for anything. I think that was always the thought, that, you know, if LRCIA can raise the money, that's great, because this is going to be an amenity that they're not going to own at the end of the day, we are. And the way I look at this, and I think Commissioner Sheffer kind of mentioned it, or Mark mentioned it, this is a project, a $1.4 million project, and basically, there's 1.1 million in the bank, free money, that will be given to us to pay for this. And basically, what we're asking is to be able to provide the commitment on March 8th, at the end of the 60 days that we allowed, to move forward on this project, with the idea that everybody's going to work towards, hopefully, LRCIA raising as much of that 280 as possible. But we can't move forward until the city's commitment's there. And I agree with what Mark said. In my, you know, little bit of activity in fundraising, a lot of people like to see the commitment from, in this case, the city, because for the longest time, I know a number of these people have been saying, yeah, you know, I'll support it, but the city's got to be behind it. And, you know, specifically, that $100,000 that came in a couple of weeks ago, I spoke with the gentleman, and he's like, you know, Paul, it looks like you guys are going to be able to do this, count me in, count me in. And all of a sudden, it was $100,000. So, you know, my feeling is, it's, we are basically, we have a situation here where we're, it's free, at least 85,000, excuse me, 85% of it is on board already, and the hope is to continue to raise funds, but we're in a time crunch, and, you know, that's where we are.
Can we get, can we, thank you, Mayor, and thanks for that additional information. Can we get an extension on the contract bid right now, so to allow the nonprofit to raise more money? They were really successful in raising money in a very short time, so is it possible to get an extension to give them another week or two weeks, or whatever the case may be, to lower that deficit right now?
Can I say something before, Matt? It's not really a short time, because this has been out there for 10 years. I mean, once we were getting closer, in the last year or so, we've been able to raise the money because the commissioner said a year or so ago-
No, no, I understand that.
We're moving forward.
I heard in the meeting this morning that when we found there was going to be a shortfall, we raised 130K or something in a very short period of time, right? Is that correct? Within-
Weeks.
Weeks, right? That's all I'm talking about, that amount of money. So if that took two weeks, in four weeks, we should be able to cover this.
And-
If we had an extension.
To look at that, so I'll put this in perspective. I work for a company that is typically on the opposite end, being asked for a lot of things financially across the state. So I speak from experience on this. So as this project has gotten legs, folks are more inclined to support. The 130 that we raised, 100 of that is from one company. So-
Okay.
That, to put it in perspective, a large percentage of that's from one company. Representative Schwartzkopf said, I believe in this project, I can find you another 20,000. I think he would have done more if he could, but he did what he could. And then we've had two other entities at a smaller level put in 2,500 apiece, and we're getting kind of a ripple effect. And that's, I'm confident we can raise funds. I think putting it on the organizations, say, hey, we got you a two-week extension on a bid, because we have to think of a contractor that has, you know, a timeline for materials, for construction, et cetera, and he might say, I just got three other bids that are, I'm going to go with somewhere else because I can lose this business because I've given you 60 days. I think that has to be placed into the overall consideration. We're not going to lighten up on our end, I can assure that, and we're going to continue to raise as much as we possibly can. And for the long haul of it, we're looking at raising funds to continue to help with the maintenance costs, if this comes to fruition and is, you know, a finished product. And we've talked about looking at ways to raise funds and establish an endowment that would allow that to continue on as well. So we will do our absolute best, that I can assure, but I can't predict and see into the future for two weeks.
Your efforts are admirable, Mark, I really appreciate that. And, you know, I'm, I don't have any problem with what the LRCIA is doing, I have a problem with our process, because these bids were open January 8th, and I got this paperwork two days ago, and it came up in the, after the entire budget discussion on February 21st, with a deadline of March 8th. There's something wrong there. There's just something wrong there.
Anybody else?
I have a question for Mark. On the funding source, you have a lot of, sort of, the big-ticket bond bills and some government funding from Denrick and whatnot, and some large companies that are donating. My understanding is you've been out just trying to get 100 bucks, 250 bucks, 500 bucks from individuals. I don't see sort of other or miscellaneous funds captured here anyways.
So we have been doing that, and actually for several years. So we've actually, as a nonprofit, we have to pay for certain things, our post office, you know, getting case studies done to take to the donors and such. So we have some funds that we have to maintain in our account. Over the years, we've raised approximately 18,000 that are, I would say, smaller-level donations, $100, $50, $25, you know, 5,000 or less, I would say, would fall under that. So that, we didn't note in this big pool, because as a, you know, a nonprofit is a business, we have to have some money in the bank to continue trying to raise funds.
Can you tell us how much you have in your operating account at the moment?
Well, considering that, at the moment, I can, we have, a lot of the funds there are coming into the nonprofit. So like Crystal Trust, the $150,000 is set in in our account, waiting to be transferred over to the city, because that's dedicated to that project.
Okay. I meant non-dedicated to this project funds.
Oh, it's, I would say it's probably around 10,000 to 15,000 currently, because we've been getting materials for, we've done donation envelopes and case studies and the such, so we're spending some funds on things like that.
I'll just generally make my comments on the project. One, I'm supportive of it 100%, although I've always said, as the project continues, I do want to monitor traffic and parking in that area. I know that's something that a lot of people are concerned about. Otherwise, I am very supportive of the project and look forward to it. Being one of the people that said I would help fundraise and have a fundraiser with friends and business owners, I've not done that yet. Knowing that, knowing that a lot of other people have planned on doing it, and that's, this is just not the greatest time of year to do it, in the wintertime, and what LRCIA has done already, and upcoming in June, sort of starts fresh, new grant opportunities, I feel very confident that we're going to get to the 280 in private sources. I do not think that the city should be paying very much at all on a project like this, when we have a lot of other very important infrastructure capital improvement plans. With that said, I do think that we're going to get to the 280 from private funds. What I, what I'm struggling with is this process. We're going to have to amend the budget, take something out, as more money comes in, revise the budget again, and put stuff back in. So I agree with some others that the process, the timing, I'm not thrilled with. I think it's an important project, I'd hate to see us lose money because we're not taking advantage of it before June 1st, so it's a bit of a struggle.
And there's a couple key things with this. Yes, the, some of the bond, or the grant money may have a one-year expiration date, but what I heard Mr. Spong indicate is that the fact that we're, we're just here, I mean, the ideal situation is that this contract would have been awarded in, earlier this month, and that the contractor would have been able to start staging and ordering supplies and arranging for the equipment, getting the permits and those types of things. So every day that we delay could equate to a factor of whatever in increased cost in delays in completing the project. And I'm not an advocate for just spending money that I don't have. I don't do it personally, and I don't expect the city to do it. But I also recognize that there's been so much investment in this, and I have more problems saying, we're going to say no to 1.1 million dollars that is coming from the public to support a project where the asset's going to be owned by the city, and just taking a very shortsighted approach to, and I could be wrong, and I deserve to be, you know, marched out in public and embarrassed. But the thing is, I agree with Edward, I agree with what Mark has said. We have smart people who are working hard to raise the money to do this. They're not going to stop, they're going to keep going, and I know myself, I would be more inclined to invest in something where I saw real work being done and see the benefits of that, because then I know what's going to happen, and I'm not just giving my money to somebody who's going to skip town. And so I just think that it's a hard decision to make, but I'm fully willing to vote, to take that risk and press on with the contract and continue to work with the folks to raise funds.
City manager, do we have some sort of partnership agreement with the nonprofit organization?
Well, we've committed, yes. I'd say that we do have a partnership. The city signed, and it will accept the bid on behalf of LRCIA, so I'd say that we do. We've committed funding from the ORPT grant to pay already some of the expenses that have come in from Mr. Spong, so yes, we have a partnership.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there a mechanism to put some strings on this commitment?
Are you saying so that we sure we get the money that they raise?
Or there's some incentive for them to continue to fundraise? And I guess one concern I do have, and I really don't think this is a problem, and I do think that they'll raise the 280, but what I, wouldn't want to see happen is that we commit the money, and then some businesses and other organizations are like, oh, the city's already funding it, why are we going to, why are we going to put more into it? That is my fear, so I would like there to be some strings attached and put the nonprofit organization on the, you know-
Edward, it's also the way that we talk about it, it's the way that we communicate our actions as we go forward. It's the way we talk to the Gazette and to the Rhode Beach Homeowners Association and all of our neighbors in terms of what we're doing, and I think that's, that's critical.
Yeah, no, communication and the PR aspect of this is critical, but if we're going to make the commitment, I want it to be with the, with the understanding that we're, we're doing this with the intention that they're going to raise the rest of the money within this year-
I fully agree.
And we're just making a commitment.
I fully agree, it's just that often, we take action and then we don't communicate, we leave it to happenstance, or our good friend out there with the Gazette to figure out how to write about it. And I think we need to-
So I think my question was just-
Be more proactive.
Is there a mechanism where we can put some language into an agreement that, that just solidifies what our intentions are? And the other thing is, city manager, I think I'd ask for your recommendation, as Sharon sort of leads the budget process and comes to us first with recommendations, where she sees us falling in to it.
Actually, a couple, I just remembered something that I hadn't, and that is that there's, there is an additional 79,000, I think, that they, you have to raise?
Yeah, we're taking care of it.
Right, but you have to raise that, you don't have it now, right? That we're not responsible for covering, it's a direct link between LRCIA and Matt Spong, but they have to raise that too. So they don't just have to raise the 280 for us, if anything, they have a direct obligation, so their direct obligation may come first, just throwing it out there, that's an additional 79,000. But the one question I had in terms of timing, I, you know, so we're going to act on this not knowing what we have to take out of our budget for next year, because that meeting will not take place until March 10th. I guess I'm wondering, could we have a special meeting, another one, between now and March 8th, where we know for sure, and we can tell the public, what we're not doing this year because of this situation? So after the budget meeting, I discussed briefly, because there wasn't time-
So, after the budget meeting, I discussed briefly, because there wasn't time, with the finance director. And I think instead of taking money away from the CIP and taking money out of the CIP, we could review the budget again. Again, it's a fluid budget and look at the revenue sources that we have in place. We are very conservative, as you know, and in, you know, somehow reviewing those revenue sources and maybe add additional revenue from parking perhaps. You know, we've, we have a new hotel tax that we very, very, very conservatively budgeted. So, in looking at that, looking at the 96,000 that was brought up in the budget summary, I feel pretty confident that we can look at that funding and adjust the budget for your March 10th meeting to not take anything from the CIP.
From the one presented today.
Correct.
The version presented today.
Correct.
That's very encouraging.
That is.
I haven't said a lot here on this topic because we talked a lot this morning and Steve and Edward and the mayor have spoken eloquently about it. I'm certainly supportive of this moving ahead. I did say this morning, and I mean this genuinely, and I live on the end of town, that, with the canal in my backyard, and anything we can do over there that, to enhance that neighborhood, I think is an incredible asset for our entire community. And there will be a ripple effect, I think economically, both in terms of property values, in terms of this being the destination people want to come and, and spend money. The fact that external sources have given us over $1.1 million speaks volumes to me and that alone says that we should go forward with this. I've talked with Mark both privately, publicly. I've been at fundraising events that he and, and the foundation run. They're professional, they're good at it. It's given me every confidence in the world that they will raise the 280,000-plus dollars in the bank for, for management after the construction is done. So, I, I feel very, very confident going forward with this.
And Commissioner Byrne, I just want to applaud you for what you said because you said it better than I could, but.
No, just a few less words.
But, but, yes. Well said. But we, I just believe that, that, you know, we need to look at what we want the future of this city to be. And I think that there's a growing interest in having an asset like this within our town to allow families to enjoy the canal, to allow transportation that isn't on coastal highway to happen between Lewis and Rehoboth Beach and back. And, and I just encourage us all to take a, to say, "How committed are we to that, that future that, that could bring joy and a lot of enrichment to people's lives?" So, I think when somebody comes up with 1.1 million and we're asked to, to promise just to support without having to open up the wallet right now for 280,000 is something that we need to strongly consider.
So, I want to just reiterate that three things you, you also eloquently already said this, but, but I want to summarize a few things. One, this is a commitment, not an actual expenditure at this point. And we do anticipate that the nonprofit will raise that, that 280 over time. Number two, this morning we talked about CIP that I think, I think, and I'm just open to suggestions, I feel like this, both the city as well as the commissioners were generally comfortable that those investments were addressing the critical infrastructure projects that we have right now. So, nothing's being taken out of those critical projects to fund this. Am I correct, city manager, in general, from your perspective?
As of right now?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, I would not look to do that. I would, you know, look, and it's not a manipulation of the budget. I wouldn't say that unless I was confident that we are very conservative.
Right.
And we could look at the revenue sources and adjust them accordingly.
I think that's great. And number three, I would like somebody to address, whether it's Glenn or Sharon or whoever, Edward's question, is there a way to put in an agreement what the intent is? I'm not sure we, I didn't hear any answer to that or at least some spec, some, you know, discussion about that question.
I mean, sure. I mean, they're, they're a nonprofit, they're able to enter into a, into a contractual arrangement, but I don't see this as a, as we said, it's a, it's a commitment. It's not a obligation on either part at this point. So, you could do sort of a memorandum of understanding that would set out the expectations of each party. It certainly wouldn't be in the form of a promissory note or something like that where one is promising to pay. So, but certainly you could do a memorandum of understanding that would clarify the expectations of the parties.
And could that be broader than just the, the finance? I mean, could, could that include a number of other logistical issues?
Sure.
Okay.
Solicitor, do we generally not enter in the MOUs when we're in a partnership like this?
You can. They're not, they're not uncommon. You know, truthfully, Commissioner, there's not a lot of public-private partnerships that are happening right now with the city of this magnitude. So, you know, but, but this is probably at an appropriate level to consider that sort of an arrangement.
I guess I was just surprised, which is why I asked if there was an agreement or an MOU already in place earlier. I guess I'm surprised there isn't.
I guess partly that's because this is, you know, this is the first time where funding is now getting really down to the, down to the end and we're trying to figure out how the project goes forward. So, if that's something you want to pursue, it's something we certainly can.
I don't think it's a bad thing. Other, other than that, I mean, I'd, I'd like to hear more from the public about it.
Yeah, definitely.
I've got a question for Matt before we move that direction. You referenced the, the bids that came in. What, what do you, what do, kind of, we generally know about Thompson &amp; Sons contracting and their experience in this area and so?
They have a very good reputation. We worked with them in Milford on a park restroom and utility project. And I also checked them out with, they do work with EDIS, which is one of the biggest construction managers in the state. And they do work with 7-Eleven, not 7-Eleven, Wawa. Yeah, Wawa, 7-Eleven's hardly around anymore. And they do numerous schools, they do work for Delta. They're bidding on a huge job with Delta, which makes me a little nervous because if we don't get them that now, they're actively pursuing other projects and we missed the boat.
Where's their home company located?
Milford. And 90% of the subcontractors are from Delaware.
That's great.
Good. Thanks, Matt.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to say something? Please, if you can come over here. And if you could say your name and address, please.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Jeffrey Good at One Grove Street. I have, I'm against this project. I'll say that right out front. And I'm going to cite three reasons for my reluctance to go ahead with this. Some of them won't be too popular here, but it needs to be said. Firstly, I agree 100% with Commissioner Gay and mostly Commissioner Gay, no one else seems to be that concerned, that we don't have the money. We have $60 million in debt at least, probably more. We just have a 50% tax rate. I don't think this is the time to have discretionary spending, no matter how much money the companies donate to Rehoboth, to help this project. So, I won't go on too much with that, but basically we have so many issues, safety issues, stormwater issues, tax issues. This is not the time for major new projects that will either cost us money upfront, the 280,000, or in maintenance, dredging, whatever it would take. That's the first thing. The second reason I'm against this proposal is, let's look at Grove Park itself. I think what's going on in Grove Park, I wouldn't use the word tragic, but it's really unfortunate. It's a beautiful park, beautiful old trees, there's not a blade of grass, it's completely trampled upon during the summer due to the farmer's market. It's a small park, it's going to have many, many, if this is a successful project, it'll have many, many more tourists. It's not going to be a very nice-looking park. It's some of the, I'm not a tree specialist, but the trees don't look too healthy to me. So, Grove Park does not need this increased traffic, this increased business. It's a nice park for the residents and of course tourists, but I, it seems that doesn't matter what's, what residents might want here. But it's, it's a nice park and it's going to be destroyed even further. The third issue I wanted to mention, which goes along with what I just said about Grove Park, is that the circle area, the entrance to Rehoboth, is becoming similar to what Staten Island is to Manhattan and what New Jersey is to Manhattan, for those of us who are familiar with New York. All the projects that nobody wants near their house, you don't want these things, thousands of tourists right going through your lawn, parking in your driveway. Nobody on this commi, on this commission wants that, but the people who live there, okay, you can have it.
Sure. Bring it to Lake Avenue.
The people who live there don't want it. I don't know if you ever asked us. You have to be there to watch it, to see cars parked on your lawn and in your driveway and walking all over your lawn. It's, it's a horror and you guys are making it worse. So, that's sort of, I don't know, that's sort of harms, you say, someone mentioned the property values would go up. I think they'll go way down. And secondly, I think that you're helping to destroy the quiet enjoyment of your own property here. Maybe long ago, maybe about five years ago, that area of Rehoboth was all commercial and there wasn't that much residents who lived there. But now there's a lot of new homes, including mine, there's a lot of residents. It's not the dumping ground anymore it used to be and that's what you guys are treating it with clear space, with this, every, every project you think of.
Okay.
You shove it right, I'm not okay. You shove it right in my throat and you do it to everyone who lives there and you don't give a damn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You had your time. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Please. Got to raise your hand, buddy.
Hello, my name is Lisa Train. I'm at 64 Henlopen. And Edward, I don't want to butcher your last name, I can't see it that far, but my question is directed to you. In your statement about, your argument about this project, which I'm still sitting on the fence for, you said you're going to monitor traffic and parking. Can you please expand on that? When traffic is now a gridlock and you literally have to say your prayer as you're driving into town to find a parking space? So, when you mentioned you're going to monitor traffic, what do you, can, what do you mean by that? What, and if you find a result from that, how are you going to try to resolve that?
Should I, should I respond? My only comment was, I, a lot of people that were against the project live in the area and parking and traffic was their concern. And I don't want to ignore those concerns that as this project continues, I don't think we know what the outcome will be with traffic or parking, but I want to keep an eye on it and if adjustments need to be made, we make them.
Okay. In your personal opinion right now, how do you find the parking and traffic situation right now during the months of July and August? And all of you can chime in. Is it good? Is it bad? Is it horrific?
I mean, I'll, I'll chime in.
Is it getting worse? I don't know. I mean, because I park it.
Yep. We're getting a little off track.
No, no, because it has to deal with this project.
But just from one perspective, is it crowded in Rehoboth? Sure.
I'm not asking about the crowds. I'm asking about the traffic and the parking.
The traffic. Can the traffic be better? That would be great, but we've only got a certain amount of streets, certain amount of parking spaces. And, you know, our hope is it continues to flow the way it is, maybe gets better, but we have.
Or maybe it can get worse, correct?
I don't know that it can get worse.
Right. Because cars can't turn around and move anymore.
Well, and, and that's great. I mean, we could basically close the bridge and only let residents in. But what, what a lot of people need to know is.
Wait, hold on. You're introducing something. How can you close a public street that belongs to the public? So, does that mean now that the residents of Rehoboth will buy the streets? I mean, make things that make sense.
All right. I'm getting off track and I apologize. I mean, basically, the traffic, will this cause more traffic? I doubt it. It'll just continue the way it is. Maybe Grove Parking Lot will fill up a little bit more.
Grove Park is already filled up to max.
Well, in the summer, unfortunately, some people park there and go to the beach.
Then how are you going to resolve that situation?
That's an enforcement situation. But, I mean, Grove Park, unlike this gentleman, I think is a great park. I, I go there a lot because I'm at one of the buildings there, but the children playing, people drive in, whether it's visitors or residents, and I think it's a great amenity. I think this is a great addition to that amenity. Will, will traffic ever get better than it is today or less traffic? Probably not. Will there ever be more parking spaces? There's plenty of parking spaces if people live, look for them. But, you know, I, I think Rehoboth, I mean, for those two months that you mentioned, man, it's pretty crowded. But you know what? For the other eight to 10 months, it's spectacular.
Right. But a lot can happen in those two months of July and August that can be hazarded to somebody's life, somebody's health and somebody's well-being. And it just seems like all these are great ideas, the signs. Maybe dozens of tourists get lost in Rehoboth Beach and cannot find Gordon Pond. I don't know. Maybe they don't know where Nicole's Pizza is today for the fir, and I hadn't seen them and I'm not even sure when they were constructed. Today, there are signs that say beautiful Baltimore Avenue, restaurants and shops. I had to stand four feet away to read that sign.
And that's why we're doing the wayfinding situation is to address that.
You know, I'm just like, so, I sat here this morning and this afternoon, all these ideas are great. Would I love, personally, would I love to see a barge between Rehoboth and Lewis? Absolutely. Because it's, the scenery is spectacular. Number one, to get down there, we're having an eight, if we're going to think about the residents, my mother's 83, she can't make those stairs. How are you going to accommodate?
There are no stairs.
There's no stairs? Okay, then I'll take that. Okay. Thank you very much. So, she would be thrilled to get on a flat-bottom boat. But, we're adding these ideas that are going to create further problems to the city and we have so many problems that have to be resolved. The storm issues, the parking. Before we add something on, we have to fix something and get a solid foundation so we continue to grow forward. I'm not saying no. Yes, we have a huge coupon of $1.1 million sitting on the table, but we have floods happening because pipes are bursting under, underground right now that need somebody's immediate attention. And all it is, is let a sewer pipe flow and you have a massive hazard which can easily happen. And I don't hear that being addressed. People want to kayak. Well, people are coming to this town, July and August, without kayaking and they're perfectly fine.
You've been about six minutes, if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. So, delete the past four, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your time. Charlie, thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlie Garlo, 82 Sussex Street, about two or three blocks away from this effort and I think it's a wonderful idea. My kayak is in my garage gathering dust right now, getting ready to get out there on the canal and improve my health. I know I'm in pretty good shape already, but it'll certainly help my health and improve the health of lots of people who get out there on the canal and enjoy that area. The park, in my opinion, is underutilized already. There's some playground equipment there, but it's never, in my opinion, I'm over there a lot because I'm close with my dogs who take a walk and there's plenty of space for more activity. I welcome more activity, more people having fun in our wonderful city and it's just so, I'm just so grateful to see a small-town democracy working so well here by allowing us this opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right. One, two, four. Okay.
Jeff Selman, 506 Jones Lane, a block and a half.
Jeff Selman, 506 Jones Lane, a block and a half from Grove. I strongly support this idea. I've been waiting for years for this, thinking it can only improve the whole traffic situation. If you think about it, people are sitting in Lewis, deciding that we wanna go down to Rehoboth for the day. Let's jump on a water taxi. I know it'll, I'll use it to drive to Lewis to go, or instead of driving to Lewis, to take this, a water taxi. There used to be a water taxi that ran from Dewey up to Lewis, and they couldn't make it work financially. So, get this stop in there, get that back and running. I think it's a good idea, and it can only help parking.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Please. Yes, please.
I don't really have an opinion one way or the other on the park. But my question is, how much is it going to cost to maintain it every year? And how much has the city already put into it? So, and I doubt, you know, I mean, I know it's, from being a fundraiser myself, that it's relatively easy to raise funds, relatively. And I say that, you know, relatively, easy to raise funds for capital. But it's much harder to raise for operating. So I suspect that once it's up and running, it's going to be up to the city to maintain everything. And I'm wondering what budget item and how much that's gonna cost. And I'm just curious, you know, where will people park? I know Charlie can walk his canoe up there.
In the parking lot.
Where the Historical Society and the, oh, okay.
Columbia Avenue, Henlopen Avenue.
Oh, on the sides of the street, all the way down. Listen, they're parking on Oak Avenue now, and that's new this summer. Our street was full all summer. So, okay, and then, and the other thing, how much has we already put into it?
Mark, can you address that one?
And for the record, that's Jan Conacy asking the question.
Okay, Bart Carter, Canal Improvement. To answer those questions, one, as far as funds put in by the city, the funds that have been utilized so far, a grant was acquired through the partnership that they were able to utilize some of those funds to contribute to what's needed to occur so far. So, that came from a grant from Dennerack ORPT. So, technically, that was money that was given to the city.
The tree work.
There's some things that have occurred that I would have the city answer, as far as like the tree removal and such. As far as maintenance and such goes, we've looked at maintenance, there's been a couple of different estimates. The lower end is around $8,000 per year. You're looking at predominantly hardscaping. And to kind of go to the ADA, I have a nephew that's been in a wheelchair his whole life. He would be able to go down this thing, all the way to the bottom. Long ramps, nice landings and the such. Vegetation, you know, some mulch, different things like that. Those would be the primary things that the maintenance would take, you know, need to go to. The high end, somewhere around $15,000. And I know that seems like a big window, but when you look at the organization, we're looking at establishing an endowment that would actually, we could contribute each year to that. So say that was $10,000. Our organization, if we were putting $10,000 a year towards that, that's a significant portion of the maintenance. And that's something we're looking at doing. That's why our fundraising wouldn't stop at there's now a dock that's complete. It's an effort that'll continue to move forward.
Thank you, Mark.
And how many years of maintenance is built into the current funding model?
Yeah, I believe two.
To say that for the...
Two is currently built in based on the bid, so the first couple of years are there.
And I would just add that the ORPT grant that the city received, we probably expended approximately $50,000 from that for Matt's Bond services.
Anybody else? Please.
Not so tall. I'm Marie Hidkevich. I live at 221 Munson Street. I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things that have already been said, but I do wanna put into the record that this was not a good day for democracy. This whole issue was sprung on us at, whatever the budget meeting's ending time was. There was no mention on the agenda that we were gonna be talking about or approving this project moving forward. In fact, the project appeared to die or have suffered significant issues per the Cape Cod's January 30th article, when the shortfall was recognized. I do think that Mr. Schranowski's point about establishing some kind of, presuming this project goes forward, that establishing some kind of formalized relationship is important. Because we're not just talking about the $280,000. This gentleman here talked about, well, first of all, this project went up 50% just in the time we've known it. This gentleman here talked about a 20% overrun or a 30% overrun. Are we gonna be responsible for that? We talked $280,000, and that's a pretty good size of money, but it's not the end, because things do happen. I am not for the project. I think we have bigger priorities. I would appreciate that democracy work better and that the residents, the taxpayers, be informed of what's going on. This data only came out Wednesday night. How is that time to communicate? It's a true failure of our city government that this has happened. And it's unconscionable if you do vote for it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, yes, or is she going in? Oh, she's coming up.
Oh, Ann, excuse me, if I could get that overhead on again. My name is Terri Eskew. I was here this morning at the budget meeting, and I presented some of this information. I apologize to those of you who, this might be a repeat. But there again, I guess I'm entitled to my opinion. What I showed this morning was, I was very disturbed, first of all, and I'm just gonna quote the mayor. You said this morning, and I'm quoting here, you have the support from the entire community regarding this project. However, I went back down, back to the Mine Mixer from June 2019. Excuse me. Ann, is there any way to enlarge that? Is there any way to enlarge the plan? Or the... I went back to the June 2019 Mine Mixer, and there were only 39 respondents, which is really just ludicrous in a city of this size, that 39 people responded. And I really had no access to even see whether they responded positively or negatively to this. But, you know, my concern, and just repeating what was just said, I'm concerned about the future cost overruns, because as we all know with construction, there are always cost overruns in the future. You're dealing with a site here that has been...
Ann, is there, is there a way to magnify that?
Is there a way to enlarge that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. You're dealing with a site here where, you know, I'm sure, just like anything, you're dealing with construction. There's going to be cost overruns, so there again, I'm just adding my two cents worth in regards to, there is gonna be future money that's needed, who's gonna be on the hook, whose skin is gonna be in the game on this. The other thing is, one question I had in regards to the mention of Lewis, is there an adjacent parking lot at the dock that's being done there? You mentioned something about a Lewis.
Lewis, over the last several, I would say over the last decade, has improved their infrastructure along the canal. So there is a canal front park that has a canoe and kayak launch area. There's a public docking space, there's a private marina, and then across the canal, there's multiple slips that... So Lewis has a lot of infrastructure in place already.
No, I'm going about, I think, for cars.
Oh, for cars.
For people, I mean, their kayaks.
There's a parking area next to the park, similar to like this, as far as spaces go.
Oh, this is small, okay, all right. Because there again, and there again, I'm sorry to repeat myself from this morning, but I really feel as if, you know, this project is running, I mean, yeah, this project is running the budget instead of the other way around. You know, I think, personally, I think we should slow down, take the time to maybe make this project. Just, you know, maybe there's something we can do to make this project smaller so that we can establish a budget that we feel comfortable with, that the public has input in, and establish a budget where it fits our budget rather than the other way around. We're working with this, trying to fit our budget around this, and doing all these machinations about where we're gonna get the future money and how it's going to happen. So, those are the points that I wanted to make, and I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please.
Amy Parvis, 51 Henlopen. Just a point of clarification, the gentleman who was talking about this just left. But there will be no water taxi, right? This is for personal craft coming in?
This is for anybody to use, pickup, drop-off people, people to fish, kayaks, paddleboards.
But in what, in their own boats or kayaks or whatever? I mean, are we doing an actual water taxi where people pay to come down here?
She is not.
No, but, okay. Will there be a water taxi?
Could be.
Or is it only personal?
There could be. There are boats up in Lewis that originally wanted to do a water taxi, but there was no drop-off. So that's probably something that may be considered later on, but that's something for the city to consider at that time.
Okay, the gentleman who mentioned it said that there was one a while ago, and it didn't pan out, so...
Well, it didn't pan out because there wasn't a place to drop people in Rehoboth.
Right, okay.
It's very successful. It's been there, up in Lewis, for the last 10 or 12 years.
Okay.
Doing various different things.
I thought that was a goal.
Okay, I wasn't...
Of the project to have a water taxi.
Love to see it happen.
Yeah, I think...
Thank you.
There's no drop-off. Thank you.
Yeah, I really thought that was gonna be a problem.
So, the project, the infrastructure, does it exist here? Obviously, we know that. To, you know, kind of go to the guy, the gentleman that ran a water taxi, yes, he did run one from Lewis all the way down to Dewey. That's a significant haul. It was more of an excursion-type activity, but folks did enjoy, you know. And one of the things that, that we looked at for information on, would folks want some type of docking structure in Rehoboth? Was, we asked him to run a survey. And one of the things was, there's not a place to get off in Rehoboth Beach. And so that's, you know, that was a high point. I feel like I'm crouching, because I'm tall, sorry. So, the, you know, the infrastructure could open the door to that somewhere down the road, yes. And that can open, you know, that's one of the things that excited Dennerack and things is, because it's an opportunity with parking. If 40 people park in Lewis and ride on a water taxi, that's a great thing. As far as personal water vessels and such, it provides access now for paddleboard kayak that you can carry down there and such, and go for a nice trip on the canal.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
I can answer Terri's question about the survey that was on Mine Mixer with the 39 responses. My recollection is it was about 50/50. 50%, people wanted it, 50% didn't.
Anything else?
Just a couple of things for this group, Mayor, if there's no other public comment. Is there somebody else? Oh, sure, sure. I'll wait till after yours. No?
No, you please.
You please go, yeah.
Jan Good, One Grove Street. I'll keep it very brief, because I don't wanna iterate everything I said this morning. But I, in terms of fiscal responsibility, I will say that with very few exceptions up here, I think you're being derelict in ensuring the long-term financial stability of this town. Towns who have taken on, as we have, close to $70 million in debt, the first thing that goes, if you have to declare, you know, bankruptcy, is the pensions for retirees. And we have many, we have our carpenter who's worked here since 1990. We have a situation in this town where the amount of debt per property owner is just of a magnitude that is untenable. So my main problem, this project may be a valuable one, but we don't have the funds. I don't wanna depend on this gentleman in his Patagonia vest, that's a broski vest from Wall Street. One of my son's, his employer gives them out. I don't wanna depend on it. And the very, I thought Mr. Commissioner Ed C. was very insightful. If the city has now committed 281K, what's the incentive now for any of these various foundations and restaurants to donate any money? There's another issue that I think raises some conflicts of interest. One of the major donors is Dogfish Head. And from what I understand, since they have an inn across the street from the dock in Lewis, I don't know how favorably, if I were an IRS analyst, I'd look at that as full-on corporate charity, because it's in their interest to get these boats available or to be able to allow their inn, their guests that they're in, to have a means to get by water to Rehoboth Beach. But, so I'm worried about that donation, whether they'll, when they realize they can't deduct it from their corporate taxes, that they may reconsider. But anyway, so I'd appreciate, because of the massive stormwater infrastructure upgrades and repairs we need to make, as well as the wastewater treatment plant pumps and other imminent, urgent projects, this needs to be deferred until, I'd say, more like $1.7 million is raised by this hard-working Canal Improvement Association. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm assuming nobody else? If not, we'll move right into the next meeting.
Wait, wait, Mayor, I do have a question, a comment, just in response to one or two of the questions. Folks ask, well, what if it goes over budget? It's already gone up. And there is $100,000 built into the proposal for contingency funds.
But that's less than 10%.
Well, it's, it's a little less than 10%. You're right, you're right. I do just wanna say that that's in there. It's not something that's been ignored here in this, in this project. The other thing, we talked about it extensively this morning, but I'm not sure we talked about it a lot. When you talk about public support for this project, this project has been in the CDP for 10 years. So, even though the funding hasn't, a project similar to this is in the CDP, is my understanding. So Steve, I don't know, you did the research on that. Is that accurate? Okay.
Please, please.
That's a, that's a...
Ms. Conacy makes a good point.
Okay, is it not in there?
The concept was introduced, and the potential benefits were like addressed in a sentence or two.
Okay.
And so, but, but, it did kind of view the concept of having a canal dock as a positive thing for that end of Rehoboth Beach.
It was addressed in the CDP.
Yes. And again, like Commissioner Gay said earlier, it was, it was one phase. The dock was one phase of a three-phase initiative that was identified in the CDP. And she very well described about the canal walk and what that meant as far as providing a wonderful environment for people to kind of enjoy the canal.
I just wanted that brought up in this meeting. It wasn't brought up yet, so thank you, Mayor.